Should I take her?
Come in.
I think she said she wasn't coming. She couldn't.
Yes.
Take tonight's affair.
Yes.
Yeah.
Peter, away.
See you, buddy.
You want me to take?
Okay, we have six o'clock on the clock, so let's start this up if we could, please. First up, we will start with the pledge of allegiance. Flag is right back here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next up, just to alert everybody, this meeting is being recorded, and if anybody in the audience is recording it, please let us know for our records. Thank you. First up, we have the vote to approve the minutes of March twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, open session and executive session meetings. Does everybody had a chance to read through those?
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody have any corrections or issues?
Nope.
Okay, one correction, it's not a correction per se that I have in the open minutes on page three. We have, there's this duplicate of a statement, Mr. Sebastian, the two, two, two. Then there's the motion, then after that, it says, Mr. Sebastian, two, two, two again. We need to strike one of those.
Strike second one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other discussion or objections, I would extend my motion to approve both of those minutes as written, except for the strike.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, are we still doing roll calls, Joe?
Uh, yes, no, you're on screen, sir. You're, you're hurt. There's nobody at home today.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed? Sorry, I was not.
I forget how to do that. It's so long.
It's nine AM.
Next up, we have the warrants.
All right. I reviewed and approved the following school expense and school payroll warrants. Uh, school expense warrants, March thirty first, twenty twenty two, two hundred ninety nine thousand, ninety one dollars and sixty nine cents. School payroll warrants, March twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, one million, sixty thousand, five hundred and forty nine dollars and one cent. I wish to enter them into public record.
All right. Moving right along, next up, we have the Bristol County Sheriff's Office COVID dog presentation. Yes, I'm sure Shannon is going to lose her mind.
Michael, what for the sheriff, as well as the captain up front, if you'd like to have a seat up front? Where the dogs are.
They're here. I'm leaving.
Thank you for the lead on that.
I'm leaving six hours to Florida. Hunter is at the babysitter, I'm leaving six hours to Florida, so.
Oh, very nice.
I apologize.
That's okay. I want to welcome the sheriff and the captain, um, who were really the folks who reached out to us, um, and also other officers that uh, basically introduced the, the canine COVID dogs to all the districts in Bristol County, and many of us took advantage of it. Sure that the sheriff will explain that. This is scientifically based stuff, uh, that's how we went with this, as you know, uh, you've got all the articles and stuff that I sent to you. So, welcome to Norton, thank you for supporting us.
Thank you, Dr. May, and this chairman members of the committee, uh, thanks for giving us the opportunity to come and talk about this, this program, it's really exciting, we're the first, uh, department in the country to have COVID canine that actually went to the schools, they go to public, other public facilities, and they'll go to ball fields as well, locker rooms, and, um, detect COVID. Which, which not only is, of course, a public safety, uh, benefit, but in addition to that, it, we found that it's been phenomenal in regards to the reaction we're seeing from the educators, from the students. In, in this crazy time that we've all been living in with the pressures of COVID, um, there's a lot of fear and anxiety, and when the, when these, these dogs come in, their, their laps, they, they just bring everybody, uh, into a more peaceful, calming place. And, uh, they get a sense that you've got law enforcement with, with, with canine coming in, it's doing something good for them, and, and I have to tell you, uh, Superintendent Biata, he's been phenomenal, he, when we came here before, the system that they have in place here, we came, was, was really a leading system that they put in place to notify parents if there is somewhere where we indicate to be able to make sure that there's this proactive approach to it. And, uh, that partnership is so critically important for, for all of you, us, and of course, the families of the community. And so, um, we're now at twenty eight, uh, schools across the county, we're adding them all the time. We're also, uh, five different, different communities, and there are more and more communities asking us to commit. We're getting ready to, and we're about, I think, uh, Captain speak, but we're, we're about ready now to have them certified as well as therapy dogs. So we get dual benefit there, and actually, we're talking about, I don't know if you're familiar with Friends of Jack, have you heard of that? We spoke to them about, uh, maybe having them also service the hospitals where these kids are to go in and help there. And, and, and I'll add one last thing before I turn it over to the captain. You know, we even bring them into our place, you, I'm sure you all recognize that it's tough to get workers, people who work in overtime and things like that, it's very stressful. They come in, and then when they're doing their searches, they take them to the central control, our staff get this benefit, and, uh, and so they, they thank the, uh, captain and handler every time they come in and ask them actually not to leave, but they gotta get back to work, so. But, but this is, I'm telling you, this is a cutting edge, and, um, and the fact that this school system here has embraced it, uh, as one of the first in the country, uh, you all have to be proud of. And, um, and we'll do whatever we can to continue with Dr. Mayella and all of you in whatever way we can to support this difficult situation.
Thank you, thank you, Superintendent, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for, for having us. So Norton was one of our first schools, and we're, we're proud that, you know, the superintendent reached out, and you have a great superintendent too. He's, he's, uh, yeah, he, he's, uh, we'll talk about it afterwards, uh, for the brownie points. But he's great, I, I mean, we, we text back and forth, whether it's weekends and, you know, and stuff, he's, he always answers, you know, even when he's away. So he's a, he's a great man to deal with, and you're blessed to have him, and I'm glad we, uh, we met, so. You know, the, the training, it, it was, um, it was fun, it was definitely interesting. The sheriff saw, um, how it all started, was, you know, like last February, I was actually on a detail in Attleboro, and the sheriff called me and said, hey, I saw this great thing, and, you know, and, um, I'd like to, you know, get some more information, and couple of months go by, we get some valuable information, and the sheriff, you know, uh, looked at it as a public safety, uh, tool, like, like he said, you know, um, you know, we're out with, with our other canines looking, you know, for drugs and stuff like that, but the sheriffs, you know, um, wanted to help in a different way, and it's, it's worked, um, you know, um, masks, you know, that's how we started with positive COVID masks, we put it in a jar, and basically play hide and seek with the dogs, and, um, you know, when your body, it's kind of like almost, um, you know, the dogs that detect cancer, or, you know, epileptic seizures and stuff, your body actually gives off an odor, and that's the same thing when you, when a person, um, has COVID, your body's fighting that infection and gives off an odor. So, um, that's how it started, we, we got the dogs in, in April, and we started training in May, and graduated in August, and started the school year, and we haven't stopped, it's been nonstop, um, like the sheriff said, twenty eight schools, five school districts. Um, I was just down in Sagamore yesterday, I was at the Montessori School down in Sagamore, down in Bonestable County, so we're, we're spreading out, and, um, it's a great program, the, um, you know, and on the, they are therapeutic dogs, you know, um, that wasn't their title, um, they're still going to do the COVID, but, you know, the sheriff, once again, to help out in the community, what he does best, thought, hey, let's just try to, let's get these, these dogs doing even more. And, uh, so our, our dogs will be certified, uh, we're probably going to be starting next month in May, um, probably be up and running by June, and there'll be certified therapy dogs too, and just, you know, to help out in the community, you know, as well.
The other thing is that, um, some people have asked, and others, we've spoken to them, have asked, you know, is it dangerous for the dogs to get COVID? And they actually, they actually don't. That was one of the first things, we did, we did this through Florida International University, and once it started, developed this process, and believe it or not, they, um, they were trying, trying to save the avocado industry, because the trees would become diseased. And they thought, what if we could get a hold of the disease off of one of the trees? Because some trees would have it, but they would never show it, so, so until it was too late, so they, they did that, they processed it, thought the dogs had to detect that odor, and they saved the entire avocado industry, those dogs would go through, and they could, they could hit on a tree that you, that was diseased. And so, it's, it's been, um, well proven that this is really a, uh, an excellent tool. And as you can tell, now, we've seen the news lately, Massachusetts is up again with hospitalizations on the new streets. So, we don't know where all of this will go, but, um, whether this is going to be just sort of a regular kind of different strain of flu that's going to happen every year, but the, the canine would be able to, to detect those things as time goes on, and, um, depending on what new variants it will be.
So that's my, my question, so as the variants change, you're able, you have to retrain the dog, or they pick up on it still?
No, they still, they still pick up on it, and Norton was very, um, very fortunate to, to meet Dr. Mills, who started this with, uh, the, with FIU, um, in Miami, and, and Dr. uh, Biata got to, uh, meet her too, and I'll tell you, she's, she explained it very well, and, and was, was absolutely amazing, so, basically, the, whether it's like the BA two variants, the, the new variant that's out right now, that's, um, that's out there, it's still the COVID odor, so the odor's really not changing, it's, it's, you know, still the same, same odor, just a different variant, so no, we don't have to to re, retrain it, which is, which is great, so.
So, I guess, maybe my own curiosity is, is how this program starts in Florida, but how does it come to our little county in Massachusetts? Like, how, how is that, like, you know, going up I ninety five to, to, you know?
Well, actually, the way, the way, the way it happened was, um, a friend of mine had seen something on TV about they might try to develop this technique based on the avocado thing, uh, this Florida university, then, you know, International University down in Florida. And I said, really? So, I went, called down to Florida University, said, hey, are you doing it? Or did you, I don't remember, I told him, I, I don't know which one it's about, but, but I said, let's, I'm gonna call them and find out, whether or not we can qualify. And they said, well, you all, uh, the first, one of the first to ask, the maybe asked, but you know what, we'll do you first. So, I said, we're in, tell us what we gotta do, just all started, uh, working with them on what, what it would cost, what we would do, and, um, so it was beneficial to them, beneficial to us, and beneficial now to, to our county. So, it really was just a, an opportunity that kind of presented itself at the right time, and looked like, hey, why not? Let's try to be the, be the ones that can get out there first and get it done, so.
There's two dogs, right?
Yes.
Are they both your dogs?
No.
No.
Well, they belong to our department.
Right.
Officer Santos, Teddy Santos has Duke, the yellow lab, and then I have Hunter.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's Hunter, Hunter.
They wanted to be appropriate for, for the weekend.
I think it's important for the committee, and I know the committee knows a lot of this, but for the general public, that, um, thanks to the sheriff, thanks to Captain Douglas, where, I mean, you're off duty and texting me on weekends, uh, as well, so, um, what this really did for us is really supported Wade and our custodial, uh, crew of men and women in, in making sure that any high areas, um, were thoroughly cleaned, not only during the day, but at the night shift, at the start of the school day, the next day. Um, we had a couple of hits early on, as you remember from my, my communications, uh, and what that did is that just allowed us to make sure that we're targeting and cleaning areas, and it made us feel really good, because we started to have visits where the dogs were going all over the building with no hits, which makes the guys and the gals in the department, and I know Wade, I mean Wade, who just come into the office, calling, no hits, I'm happy. So, so, um, it's, that's what it came about, it was a community service available to us, we just simply said, we'd like to be involved, no cost to us whatsoever. I guess, you know, my time and, and staff's time, the principal's time, to make the contacts and get the, but when these dogs walk in, unlike drug dogs, maybe we should talk about that too, um, unlike drug dogs, these dogs, yes, the, the, those, these dogs are just, they're just friendly. They're like going over to someone's house with a friendly lab, and so what happens is they ease the tension that was happening in the building. And during this type of incredible anxiety, any type of a third party that you can bring into the building that just makes everybody do this is a positive, right? I mean, these kids are just asking, can I touch it, can I pet it? Yeah, can't, can't do that with a drug dog.
So as soon as the dogs walk in, kids are able to approach them and pet them, and?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And they, and they're, um, they're great temperaments, but they're kind of, I mean, my dog sometimes can be, like, I feel a little snooty. You know, she kind of comes in and will ignore, and not in a bad way, but she gets to work, and she does her thing, and when she's done with her job, then you can do it, you know, uh, have playtime, you know? Um, I just want to add too about the dogs, they were donated, uh, by a local, um, donor, so it was no, these dogs were no cost to the, uh, to the taxpayer and, and to the sheriff's office, uh, by, uh, Panagak, uh, excuse me, Dot dental, uh, Dr. uh, David Askew, yeah, they do a lot for us, and his wife Jane. So, uh, my dog's actually named after their dog who passed away, the Hunter Foundation. So, my dog kind of has a little, you know, backstory to it, so these dogs at, at no cost.
One of the schools we were at, uh, I don't know, see, I can't remember, I didn't remember the schools at the time, but we were in the library, um, as Dr. Reynolds speaking, and, and, um, the kids were all sitting around in a circle, the teacher was reading with them or something, and so the, our, our COVID dog went through and hit on a book somewhere down, down the aisle somewhere, and went, went through the whole place, and that was the only place it's hit. Um, they, they marked it, and the works can take care of it, but then all the kids said, can we, can we walk the dogs? So, all like ten, fifteen kids got up, and they all wanted to. And that was Hunter, it was Hunter, it was Hunter took them, took them for a walk all the way around. And, and we actually had one, you want to tell a story about the one child, the kid that was really, uh, very anxious?
So, yeah, so, and this is why I think the sheriff wants to go towards the certification of, you know, therapy dogs as well, and when I spoke about this, I think his antennas went up and, and, you know, wanted to help out the community, but they, I, I won't mention the school, but there was a school in our, in our county that, um, there was a kid just having a real bad day, you know, behavioral issues, some autism stuff, and the, uh, DSRO School Resource Officer says, Cap, can you please bring Hunter, um, into this classroom with the students? I said, yeah, absolutely. So I bring Hunter in, and soon as that door opened, and he saw the dog, he just, he went right to the ground. It's actually kind of gives me goosebumps, but, um, went right to the ground and with his arms up. And, uh, so I let her go, and then she, he just started hugging Hunter, and we were in there for about forty five minutes, and, um, he took a Poland Springs bottle that was empty, and he just started playing fetch, and that was like Hunter's favorite toy. Just kept playing fetch back and forth with, with a Poland Springs bottle. But the point is, is the, the kid went from maxed out to right down to normalcy, and, you know, and then at the end of it all, I let him walk Hunter to my cruiser, so we walked through the whole school, and then he was so proud, and he's behind that fifteen foot lead, and he, you know what I mean, so it, it's, it's a great, great tool, and even for staff, we've gone in, and there's been staff that have a bad day. You know, one lady in, in a school, her, her dog was at cancer, and, you know, and saw Hunter, and, you know, so it's, it's been, it's been great.
There was just one other thing, if I could just add, it's kind of a tangential piece of this, but you, you spoke of autism. I don't know if you have any students here, if you have issues around autism, but just for your, your knowledge, um, we have, we have a program called Project Lifesaver that actually, um, works with families, puts the, the child, we do it for elderly people who suffer from dementia autism as well, they would get a bracelet they wear, and that bracelet, if they were to wander, um, will give off a signal. As soon as we start responding, we'll pick up that signal coming in, Norton, I think, has one more, one of the detectors. And we come triangulate coming in, we can generally get that, find that person within, um, a half hour. We're now working on, um, the technology with the drone. So the drone, even though we're coming in, the drone would even, would even respond faster, because that will pick up the technology of the deep as well. I actually kind of decided, I only bring it up because of the, the issue of autism that many, many schools, you know, have.
So if no one's ever seen it before, because Bentley comes into the Mansfield Schools all the time, and, and what you just described, I see all the time. And, and they have a Bentley Award, and teachers can nominate kids, and then they get their picture taken with them, it's like, it, it really makes, it's, it's amazing how quickly, you know, that dog walks into the room, and everybody sits on the rug and quiet, waits, you know, almost like they're trained, you know? It's funny.
I mean, I, I think too, like, we spoke last week, when we spoke to our sheriffs or the week before, it's another positive interaction with law enforcement.
Yes.
For some of these kids that may not have had positive interactions in the past, you know, possibly older, you know, middle school, high school kids, but, you know, if we can start those interactions at the elementary level, you know, hopefully we can, you know, and, and you're doing a service for us, which we thank you for, but, you know, they're getting these positive interactions, which I think just builds on that future that, you know, I mean, you guys are taking, law enforcement's taking a hit, we all know that, but hopefully we can start turning that trend by having these interactions at this younger level.
I don't know if you all, uh, in the room have met Officer Santos, basically my partner in, in crime with, with Duke, um, and he's probably got one of the best personalities that you could ever, ever imagine.
Easy going.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's a great, great officer, and, and he's, he's always happy, he's always smiling, he's always willing to help, so, you know, that's the other thing, like you said, sir, respectfully, like, you come in and it's not, oh, here's the drug dog, or here's the, you know, it's, you get smiley faces, smiley dogs, and, you know, it's just a great.
Given the pressures in the workplace today, you, you can apply your, you're very nonchalant, so. Yeah, yeah, but even in the workplace, with the pressures and everything, not just in our place, but everywhere, people are down, you know, and some days are more stressful than others, even with adults.
You see, it just, it just lets the air out a little bit.
Yes.
So, we, we will be, um, working with the sheriff's office with therapeutic dogs, we will absolutely extend ourselves there as well, because we see that as yet another relationship, but really, I mean, the wonderful thing for us is we're just trying to give tools to our staff, our custodians, our principals, our teachers, that just help kids. Uh, at the end of the day, it makes us feel safer, so we appreciate you folks taking the time today to come.
I just had with this last thing, just to say, again, I know Paul, but, but Superintendent Biella, the way he has embraced this program, looking for every opportunity to help these kids in this school system, is really amazing, and I've, I've seen the commitment and excitement in what you do and how you do it, it's, it's really very, very impressive, and all of you as well, you know, we're, we've always believed that we're all in the public service business, we're all partners, we all, you know, we all look to help each other out, and particularly these times, it's even more important. But, uh, but you all help us as much as we help you, and God bless you for that, for all you're doing for these kids.
I just want to say to Wade too, I know Wade's in the back, but Wade, Wade's another one that always answers his email. And he's an amazing, amazing man, he's got an amazing staff, and, um, probably one of the cleanest schools that I've been a part of and, and been involved, so hats off to you, Wade, and, and thank you, thank you so much.
Pledge of allegiance next week, Wade.
Perfect title of the show, I'll play it, Wade.
Thanks for your guest. Thank you so much.
Yeah, it'd be great to hear you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll cancel.
I'll get you, I'll get your number. You're away next week?
It doesn't COVID.
All right, I'll be away. I'll get your number, awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Shannon, Shannon, what's the deal? It's a great, it's a great, yeah, I love it.
Well, I will tell you, as, as the folks are ending, uh, I, I went out to UMass, uh, as you guys know, the other day, with about thirty five of our students, um, to do our first early college kickoff, and UMass, which was a great day, by the way. But one of the things that occurred is that UMass during finals.
That's really, you guys come on. I'm not kidding you when I say, I was disappointed, you guys didn't bring the dogs. Have a great vacation. I'm sure Shannon, Shannon watched.
Shannon was all kidding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, that was nice, um, next up, we have our student representative updates, do we have Malia and Zoe on?
Hi, yeah, we're here, um, I think Malia's gonna go first, but like, just like a little heads up, um, the kids are very ready for break, um, there hasn't been um, it's just been testing, like MCAS and all that, so, um, we're hoping to have a little bit more for next meeting, but this one, we just wanted to get everyone through a break and, um, see what's been going on or what's going to happen pretty soon, but Malia's starting with, uh, JCS, I think.
Yeah, so, hi guys, so for the JCS, um, Dr. Marcus said that the booster's on, fun run runs this week. Altogether, they've raised over twenty five thousand towards enrichment, arts, and community activities. Eighty five percent of the students registered, bringing in funds from twenty eight states and three countries. Pre-K ran today, and, uh, K through third is running tomorrow. Getting ready for their first ever sea turtle day after vacation, because I think, I think two meetings ago, we talked about how they have an official animal now, which is super cute. Um, at the big event, students will celebrate the history of JCS, play some fun games, and learn about the eighteen sea turtles we have been able to adopt as a school. Um, Zoe's gonna do the LGN.
Um, yep, so LGN, they also, they just finished, um, ELA MCAS this week. Um, they said that the children did an amazing job with focusing and working hard on that. Um, but they, and the kindergarten enjoyed rainforest reptiles and their in-school field trips, that was pretty fun for them. Um, and they wanted to thank, uh, LGN PTC for funding the event. And then overall, um, second grade has been busy writing poetry, and classrooms conducted poetry slams for their peers. So that was good that they're still learning, even though break's coming, it's almost there. Malia has the yell.
So, um, they did a, the Yale library has gotten a major facelift, uh, Mrs. Dermis, I hope I'm saying that right, uh, and the PTO volunteers, Wade Lazard and the Yale custodial staff have really done an amazing job of making their library an incredible place for students to come, thank you to all. Mr. Gigan hosted a hashtag PBIS challenge pizza party for twelve fourth grade students and twelve fifth grade students who won their chance with a gold hashtag drawing. If a teacher caught students going above and beyond being respectful, responsible, or safe, they earned a special gold hashtag to be put in the drawing. Three winners from each grade were chosen each Friday of March to enjoy pizza with the principal and friends. And then he said, thank you to the Yale PTO who also sponsored this event. Um, and Zoe's gonna cover the middle school.
Um, yep, so the middle school, um, they wanted to say a huge thanks and congratulations to the whole NMS community for having a successful parent board fundraiser. Um, and also congratulations to Benson Chang, um, who is their Project Three Fifty One ambassador, and I think he got fifty bags of clothing donated, um, for, for his spring service projects, that was really good to see. Um, and then also congratulations to the NMS Unified Basketball Team on the successful completion of their inaugural season. Um, that was really great to see, like, I know, like, we had, uh, unified basketball at the high school, and those, um, games were pretty fun to watch, especially when they did it at the pep rally a few years back, um, but I know, like, so at the superintendent's meeting with, uh, Dr. Biata and a few student representatives from each grade, we had talked about how some of these, um, like, kids with disabilities, special needs, there, it's been a lot of bullying happening, so I know it's like a downside to all this, but it was really good to see that they have unified basketball again, I know they, um, at the high school, they used to have unified track, I don't think that's happening again this year, so it's a little discouraging, um, that people aren't as invested and involved anymore. Um, best buddies didn't run this year, so usually, um, kids, at least like five to ten kids would go during the LOB period, and they would go and play games with them, and just kind of make them feel more involved in their high school life. Um, I know, like, I love doing that, but this year, it didn't start up because we had a weird LOB period, um, it wasn't the past two years because of COVID. Um, but hopefully it starts up again, I'm not sure how it's gonna go with LOB being more of a learning time, but, um, that's definitely something like I noticed, and, um, so I just wanted to bring that up, and I, I don't know if Dr. Biata, if you want to elaborate on what the kids had said about the bullying happening. And I I don't know if Dr. Breda, if you wanna elaborate on what the kids had said about the bullying happening, but it might just be a little more discussed. Um on the half day this Friday.
I know I got a student, as you know, we I have a six to twelve student advisory uh committee. Uh we had Town Spa Pizza this week, uh which was kind of cool. Um most of the new new Town Spa, we we hit upon a couple of topics that the students, it's their it's their agenda. It's really not my agenda. Um they can bring up any topics that they want. They do it very professionally. But what I heard was um some real concern around, of course, the area vaping in the bathrooms. That was like probably if not one A, one B. And then the issue of making sure that students who do have learning disabilities aren't feeling left out, if you will, are being continuously. Supported and challenged, if you will, because we haven't had things like Best Buddies, because we haven't had things like some of the unified stuff. And again, it's no, there's no finger to point. It's just what's been going on. Um there is some concerns around uh students, uh if you will, and this is more of a district-wide discussion. Around what to do is to support students once they are in fact, um if not bullied, harassed, if not harassed, picked on, whatever the the combination may be. Um and how can we as a school be more proactive in those approaches? So we put that out through our administrative. Um it's gonna be a topic of discussion in our upcoming meeting. Um some of these events are singular. Some of them are repetitive. Uh we've had discipline issues around it, you know, we've had to suspend students, we've had to bring in families and all of that stuff. Um but Zoe's right, we need a more uh effort uh this Friday, tomorrow. The at least the high school, they're spending time on creating ideas around the bathroom issues with vaping, which continues to be a problem. Concern around uh any other illegal substances. Uh you know, as I said earlier, uh for me, I want the therapeutic dogs, but. We are open for drug searches if needed and when needed. We've done it before, as the committee knows. Um and then lastly, how do we really try to get uh the bystanders, if you will, the students that don't vape, the students that don't misuse the bathroom? How do they try to come together and say, I've had enough of this? You know, if you wanna vape, go to your own house and vape. Just let me use the bathroom, please. Um so we have some thoughts that we're gonna present to the committee. Uh we're not just gonna let this go until next year. We wanna uh try to make some changes. As you know, I've already spoken about. To you about bathrooms being closed. I'll take the heat for that. There could be some water health issues with that. There could be some parents upset with that, but I have to make a priority around public safety. Uh for kids who right now won't use the bathroom all day, all day, which can't be possibly good for people. Um so we'll come back to the full committee uh on behalf of the student advisory that really is a group that says we need something and we need it now. So, thanks, Zoe.
Yeah, no problem. I just wanted to bring it up. Um also, but we are having um Best Buddies Prom is happening April twenty ninth, I think. Um so a few students from the high school are actually joining. It's at Pembroke High, I think, so a bunch of um different high schools are joining in. And it's carnival themed and um it should be a really good event. I know I went uh two years ago when they had it. It was at uh Algonquin. Um it was, it's pretty good to get everyone involved, but it just doesn't seem to be as involved in our school as it used to be. Um it's not really talked about as much, so hopefully it can change a little bit more um with now everything being a little lifted and less restrictions, but. Yeah, I definitely wanted to bring that up. Um I'm gonna transfer her into the high school, which definitely you talked about the bathrooms. That situation is just a big problem overall. Um I know, like, I don't even go to the bathroom. Um it's just. You just know, it's like we we have jokes now, like the Smokies are in there. It's just you don't you don't go in there anymore, so um hopefully that changes. But um a big positive note is that prom, that was so much fun. Um I know Dr. Breda was there as. Um a lot of administrators came and the teachers, they were on the dance floor with us, um but three hundred seventy seventeen kids. It was awesome. Um definitely a lot of fun. Um the DJ was really getting into it. He loved his job. Um but yeah, good food, definitely good ice cream. Um but so that was like really good for the class, um Malia's class officers. They did a great job organizing that and putting that together. Um and then also, um I know you had talked about the trip to UMass Amherst, but they also just had. Assumption College, and so when the students like went to college, see what it's like, um it's like organized with the school, so it gives the kids the opportunity to see what. Um college is gonna be like and kind of get a taste for it, but also I know today we just had the job fair. Um so the juniors, um all all the juniors. All the juniors um attended the fair. Um all the juniors attended. It was really good. Um the FBI was there, so that was kind of cool. Um but it gives everyone an opportunity to see what else, um what other options there are instead of just college, so. Um I know that was pretty positive hearing all the kids come back. Um a few seniors went and some sophomores as well, but Malia, I know you went. Um so I don't know if you have anything to talk about that, but I think that's it.
Yeah, I did. Um it was it was nice. It was a lot of uh like army type of stuff, definitely some different, you know, career paths. Um yeah, the prom was kind of, you know, wrap up stuff before April break. I know the AP good, AP kids are all getting ready. I'm starting all my reviews and stuff, so. It's um crunch time for us right now, but you know, break is almost here, so yeah, I I think that's pretty much it. We have the mock crash tomorrow too at the high school. Um like the like about like dangerous driving or reckless driving, I think. Um yeah, so it's pretty much.
I just wanted to mention, uh uh these two young ladies looked great at the prom. And uh and and Zoe, are you ready to make an announcement yet about next year? Is there, have you made a decision yet?
I was thinking about putting on the spot and I was like, should I do it?
Where's Zoe?
I'm Zoe.
Zoe, where are you?
She's answering the door.
Oh, she's not there?
Ah.
That's all right, next meeting.
So so who was, Malia, you still there?
Yeah.
So who was the who was the best non-student dancer at the prom?
Well, if if you or I couldn't go, then.
Well, clearly we weren't there to to cut the rug, but so who was the best like teacher or was Joe the best? Dr. Breda, was he the best dancer? Who was the best uh non-student dancer?
Um.
She's gonna kill you if you get home.
You know what?
Pass. Pass. Alright, fair enough. Alright, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Uh and we'll move on now. I don't need to grab these guys.
Yeah, they're coming in. Gretchen, I I contact Richard.
Up front. This way. Alright, is there a pilot? I will uh I will announce the agenda item. Next up, we have the recognition of the municipal track athletes. Gretchen, I turn this over to you.
Um I'm gonna, um I am actually gonna. Coach Alex. Yes.
So um four athletes here, Jill Striner, Ally Murphy, Shailie Owens, and Shay Babelski, all qualified individually as well as a collective relay team. For the national championships in New York this past March. Uh two of them individually also advanced through uh the all-state. Championships as well as the New England Championships. Ally Murphy and Shay Babelski both earned fourth place in their respective events at the New England Championships. And then all four of them together uh qualified for the sprint medley relay in the New Balance Indoor National Championships up in New York. We've qualified a team for essentially every year over the past five years, obviously with the COVID year being the exception. Um and this squad did phenomenal in qualifying despite a small hiccup in the race that almost jeopardized our qualification. We still ended up winning our the Division Five State Relay Meet um that earned us qualification for the Rising Stars Division at the National Championships. Where at the National Championships, we ran, I believe, our second best time in school history. It was four sixteen something. Four sixteen and change that ended up earning all four of them um fifth place overall in the championship. Race that but seeing teams from across the country as far south as Florida, as far west as California, so. We are incredibly proud of everything that um our four ladies have been able to do this past indoor season, looking to continue forward. Through this outdoor season, they've been a very strong group that's been continuing to bring the positive attitude and energy to. The track and field program. Um and they're all still uh juniors and sophomores, so we still have another year of them, which we're super excited to see what else they can do.
So let me just start off by saying congratulations on the accomplishments that is absolutely phenomenal. And there's no way you could say we had a hiccup and not tell us.
It was it was a so uh the way the sprint medley relay works, it's it's um it is a combination of distances that um add up to, I think it's.
Sixteen.
Sixteen hundred meters. It's a two hundred meter leg followed by a two hundred meter leg, followed by a four hundred meter leg, followed by an eight hundred meter leg, so it's. Uh short sprints to long sprints to middle distance. Um and so with the um it with it going to two, four, eight. Our first um leg, Shailie Owens, no, sorry, it's Jillian Striner, um took at took uh out of the box phenomenal. She ran her heart out over the first hundred fifty meters, um was in front by a good twenty, thirty meters. And then the last fifty meters in the race, she definitely started to feel the impact of the race coming back on her. Uh and so as she was getting up the curve to make the first exchange to our second two hundred meter leg, Shailie Owens. Um her leg started to kind of give out from underneath her, um and she fell prior to handing the baton off to Shailie. Um in a relay race, you have a certain zone that you need to exchange the baton in, otherwise you end up being disqualified. Fortunately, she fell within the zone. Um Shailie went from trying to get the baton to a complete stop, turning around. Prying the baton. Handing it out, um prying baton out of Joe's hands and continuing forward uh in the race. Able to make up a ton of time. Uh the announcers didn't even really give us a shot, but. With perseverance from Shailie, a very strong leg by Ally Murphy and then Shay Babelski just bringing it home. We were able to not only win the meet and squeeze under the qualifying standard by about a couple of tenths of a second, so.
I mean, that's an amazing story.
Just gloss over.
The sprint medley relay always has some sort of hiccup in our history, but we've always been able to somehow get it all together and to. Ultimately get to the national championships.
Jillian, were you okay after you fell?
I got this huge mark like all the time I was like, it was all good though.
Okay. Talk about perseverance. Something happened. You guys just keep on going, so that that's awesome.
Right, we always shed tears after an SMR. They're typically very, very frightened tears, waiting to see if we get disqualified, followed by very happy tears of seeing not only that we. Do not disqualify, but we also get underneath the qualifying standard.
That's right, because uh I guess it was three years ago or four years ago, we almost got disqualified because we outright won. However, we had a very exuberant. Athlete who was on the track.
Yeah, he was on the infield cheering on the team. And he was running alongside the team, which they say that it's, you know, pacing the athletes, whereas in true reality, it's not really. Um that group broke the state relay record and we were approached by the officials saying that we were gonna, he was gonna have to disqualify us because of that incident. Um I believe Ally Murphy was actually on that team. We, everyone started crying. Um we all went to apologize. Uh a coach from Situate, who wasn't even in the race, came out of the stands and was arguing on our behalf. And then the official decided to overturn it and let the results stand, so everyone continued to cry, but. The SMR is a very event, it's a very emotional uh race that really brings together the varieties of the running on the track, but. We are very proud that we still were able to qualify, compete, place, and are looking to do the same uh heading into outdoors as well.
How many uh how many winter track athletes do we have, like ballpark?
With um this past winter, we had about twenty two girls and about thirty five, forty boys.
Wow.
Um this outdoor season, we are looking at. Hundred total, about uh sixty, forty stood.
Yeah. It's always amazing how many kids in Norton love to run.
Oh, yeah.
I I see you guys running down the street. I'm always amazed because for running for me, it's usually somebody chasing me. I can't, I can't, yeah, I never get into that zone, but watching you guys train on the on the streets, it's awesome to watch.
It's definitely definitely get big props from the middle school program, both on the cross-country side um and the track side that has been trying trying to get restarted back up. Uh they've provided a lot of um they've they've been able to provide a nice filler program to us, which has been very helpful. Um and also to get that whole sense of the track cross-country sport being one of, you know, this is where you can make. A lot of really nice friends that are goal-oriented and traditionally very strong students as well, so. It encourages a very positive atmosphere, a very positive lifestyle, which we are fortunate to see a lot of our athletes continue on through the high school.
It's great.
It's great.
It's not just love to run. They're good. Like we punch above our weight when it comes to.
Oh, yeah.
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 Yeah. For for a small town, we seem to do very, very well. I don't know what it is. Maybe it's great coaching, but you know, I gotta think that it's gotta be talented kids too.
I think I think I mean before the the programs were at the middle school, it it was getting strong and it was, but all I did was just help it a little bit. And then, of course, you have coaches that just put in the extra time and effort and athletes that follow the protocols and and so on. I mean, it's. You know, when you when you start to look at GPAs on the track team, it's always interesting to see how how good these student athletes are as students. And that's the thing, I mean, you know, track and field, it's it's not something you really experienced before high school. Like, I mean, I I did the throwing events when I was in high school, but like. I never threw a javelin or a shot. I didn't know what the hell it were. You know, and then I did it in high school. I wasn't any good, but I did it, you know, but it's just. You just, oh, I'm gonna go try that because I didn't do anything else in the spring. And you gotta remember, a lot of the students that are out are 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 competing at different levels. A massive bit competing against themselves to get better, right? And so it is a, that that's, I think, and that's the best is how you're trying, you know, you're trying to improve your time, trying to, you know, get throws or all that stuff, so. So we're here tonight to recognize um each of these wonderful athletes for excellence during the twenty one, twenty two winter track and field season. Of course, you heard the story of how well they they did, so we have a certificate for each of you. Resume builder. She's so young, right? College competition, so this one is to Jillian Striner for excellence during the twenty one, twenty two winter track and field season. We'll do these. We'll do a group pic. Want to do a group picture?
Historically, it's been. Like I remember my. Well, Shay.
Congrats from the number one team. Thank you, Peter.
And this is for you, Ally. She's doing a good job.
You wanna go up front? We're gonna go up front there to take a quick pic. My favorite part of the year.
Nice job, ladies.
So yes, so who goes first? Who runs first? Who runs second? Who runs third? You run first? I'm fifth now. No way I'm running anywhere. I don't run. Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations to the family members in the back. Great kids. Thanks, ladies, very much. Folks, just thank you so much. Pleasure and happy.
Guys, there's a big surprise for you for a free day off from school. You guys are gonna go out to the parking lot and race Dr. Breda. Name it this one. You could beat everybody up here. I'm past her by ten feet. Alright, next up, we have the introduction of the new LG Morse Elementary School principal.
Mark, thank you so much. Um we had a, as you know, a very thorough process, in my opinion, the second time that we've done this through our organization, NASDAQ. Uh that we have members with. They led all the public relations pieces. Uh Dr. O'Neil put together all of the different folks to come into the room, parents, teachers. Um staff um and collated uh the applicants. From there, interviewed. Uh it was supposed to be six, became five.
Yeah.
And from there, four to three of which one person uh dropped for another job, so as you know, pretty competitive. All three candidates, by the way, were finalists, uh or two of the three candidates were finalists in other places. But we had this intriguing situation um with one of the candidates, and that was a sitting principal. Um uh Mr. Tom Higgins, who's here today, who comes to us from Eastern Public Schools. Um unfortunately, he's also at Stonehill College, but that's absurd.
Continue my program.
So he has a tax from uh Pittsburgh State, a master's degree um from uh Pittsburgh. So he has a tax from Pittsburgh State, a master's degree um from Pittsburgh as well, my alma mater. Stonehill College Master in Elementary Education. He's fully certified. Uh been in the East Public Schools uh for his entire career. A member of MAA, MMSAA, uh member of the Seoul Leadership Cohort, and you see his resume that lists. I spoke to um his superintendent, who regards him very highly, hates to see him go. But uh there's a building project going on in a bigger elementary school. Tom believes that does well with a smaller school, if you will, and that's what we have. So tonight, I I present to you science, ill and deliberate for July first, Mr. Tom Higgins.
Which happens to be my birthday, which is. Do you want to work on your birthday or not? It's nice.
You see what you do.
Uh thank you so much for for having me tonight. And I commended the team, you know, Jen O'Neill and and the interview team for such a comprehensive search um from start to finish. It was a great experience for me. Like Joe said, I've been in Eastern for twenty two years. I started there as a student teacher and um have have spent my entire career there. So to make this change a little bittersweet, but it's a wonderful opportunity for me. Um and having that Stonehill connection, Jen reached out to me and and we had a conversation about it and was encouraged to apply. I am passionate about that small school neighborhood feel, which is the LGN. I had the the privilege of of visiting last week and um so many highlights throughout the day, a few of which I'll mention. One kindergarten friend uh in music class, we walked in and he saw me and um besides being six ten, I'm I'm currently on crutches and was in a boot. And um he just looked up and said, excuse me, big guy. I just love that that age elementary education. That's that's where my passion lies. I've been there my entire career. Um for those those interactions and and I love working with children. I love supporting people who work with children. Um and the the teachers were just so welcoming. Everyone was, um faculty to staff. The school is beautiful. I know it's an older building. Um I've spent primarily my entire career in older buildings, so I know what that's that's like, the upkeep of of those places, and it is pristine. Mr. Joe and the team there have done an amazing job and I look forward to to joining the team and and, you know, supporting in ways that that I can. And um I was saying to Jen, the way I overshoot, my new my new bosses have to drive me around because I can't drive right now. But that says a lot about your district as well, like how many assistant superintendents go pick your house.
We can give all the principals drivers.
Yeah. But I, yeah, I I look forward to to joining the team, as I said, and and I hope to spend my the rest of my career here. I mean, I um I know I look young. I have a sixteen year old daughter and a sophomore at Southeastern, uh an eighth grader at the Walters Middle School and a fifth grader at the Jordan Jackson in Mansfield. And they're, I think, four miles down the road. Um yeah, three daughters. There's nothing you can say or do that's gonna scare me with. So I feel like I'm I'm very well prepared for for joining the team and and really look forward to it, so thank you so much.
Welcome.
Just wanna share a quick story with you. I'm not sure, leave it at the point yet, but I received an email from a parent um who now lives in Norton that lived in Eastern and went to Tom's school and.
As a student?
That no, their child went to kindergarten at Tom's school. Thank you for that.
That's a twenty two years.
And 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 the child is so excited about Mr. Higgins joining, so they wrote a letter to me, you know, just talk to the and please hire him, you know, you know, these like, please, you know, it'd be wonderful and all this stuff. So clearly, anytime you get one of those letters, uh you know, people go out and above, you know that the guy that you're hiring, the person that you hired is a child-centered person. And that's really important for that age level, I I think. We couldn't have two more uh uh early ed K to three, you know, pro kids, and Marty's here tonight for five, I can say, just all three of them, very pro child, try to support the staff every day. And that's that's a good thing, so welcome Tom and and the family uh to Lancer Nation. He's already wearing purple, so that's perfect. And uh and.
Overall, how was how was the the interest in the position? So.
Yep, so we actually had nineteen applicants.
I heard eighteen.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm like, that seems like a lot. Um and and so ultimately, um the LGN search committee was was very passionate about um finding a leader that understood the elementary classroom, that had experience either as a teacher there, preferably as a teacher and as a leader at the elementary level. And many of the applicants that we had didn't have that background. People were coming from middle school or high school background, and that wasn't something that they were interested in. Um you know, we we had, you know, of the candidates that we interviewed, we had a very strong pool overall. Um and ultimately, when they, you know, it came down to the finalists, they felt very strongly and very confident about the people that they were forwarding to Joe. We did whole days of site visits last week. We had one on Monday and then Tom came on Wednesday. Um and the amount of feedback that Joe and I received from the staff um and from families as well, because I also did the virtual parent forums. Um and then we sent out the recorded sessions to families that they weren't able to make it. Was was very overwhelming in response to they they just felt that Tom was the right fit for the LGN. They felt that he had.
We received a few emails too.
Embodied that whole big school.
I actually ran into a staff member at a soccer game, not even in Norton, and they were like, I don't think it's like, can you tell me? Can you tell me? And and you were referred by her, which is, you know, this is the year that the right people that the staff appreciates are getting the positions that we want to fill.
So Joe did not, Joe held his cards very close to his chest all weekend long and didn't say a word and just invited the LGN staff to the library on Monday afternoon to meet their new principal, but did not, you know, use any pronouns and didn't say anything. And so when people would come into the library, they would kind of like eek around the door. And then they'd be like, yes. Like, there was a lot of that going on, and it was it was really nice for me to see. Um and I and I think I hope it was really nice for Tom.
I shared with them in the moment that that makes, you know, you feel good as a leader to the people. And they they met me one day.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the committee got a chance to, you know, do the interview on Zoom and um. But yeah, I said to them that we we refer to as filling my, filling our buckets at Borough Hall, you know, bucket fillers pledge we do every day. And it really, I mean, there was a few woo-hoos as well.
There was. And there was a little boy that as we were walking in, he said, how Mr. Higgins?
Yeah.
Like, I've been here once.
So welcome.
Well, I I hope everybody, you know, stays in their position for a very long time because three principal searches, four years of interviews, correct? Because it was two for the high school and then the JCS.
Yeah, this this completes your total turnover of principalships.
It better. It better. You better not have any ideas over there.
So we're really lucky, and we have experience at the principal level now, which I think will only make the district uh grow and get better.
Yeah.
Well, well, yeah, welcome aboard. Um I I do think, you know, you you talked about the small school feel, and and I will say like, the LG is particularly, I think, really um really encompasses kind of a neighborhood school. More so even, you know, the JCS is a great school. My kids went there and everything, but but the LG really does kind of define as as a as a neighborhood school. So I think it'll be a really good fit for that. Um I I honestly, I think we're, I think we're an excellent district, and and I'm not just saying that. And Joe will tell you, I'm a straight shooter. If if I thought we sucked, I'd say we sucked, you know. But but we are, we are an excellent district. Um I I think that the school committee particularly has has the back of the staff. Um and and obviously, you know, we're always child-focused, but at the same time, we understand that, you know, we're running a district here. So we'll always have you back um as long as you're doing the right thing for us and, you know, could could be happy to have you here. So welcome aboard.
Isn't there a slogan, big school, no, little school, big heart?
Then it fits your teeth.
Yeah.
Little school, big principal. Uh is he gonna heat him in time for the uh I-TRAC games?
I know, I was just thinking.
I might invite him to the game to be my assistant coach, so that people can just see. He must have played basketball.
Yeah.
I play a little bit, yeah.
Is that what happened?
I wish it were a cool story. I slipped on, it was like old man slips on ice while walking dog.
So we have a charity basketball game, and boy, that is gonna be sweet.
It's a year away, but when it comes. It's gonna be a lot of fun.
Sorry, we have next week, so.
Why can't we keep him in high eight per year? Don't spin up for a year.
I'm pretty sure the word is already out.
Press releases will go out tomorrow.
Well, wel- welcome, welcome aboard. Uh happy to have you here. Okay, uh next up, we're gonna move on to the vote on the school committee meeting dates for twenty two twenty for school year. Is everybody?
This is week two, week four. I just try to be standard so that we have a fixed schedule, and we know that always works, I mean, not COVID especially. Um and I get some if needed in there. As you know, the the chair controls the dates. We have to have dates like an October time meeting or May time meeting and all that stuff. We just have those. But these right now are your recommended dates, and you should vote them, so we'll be posted.
Okay, Heather, any objections to the dates?
Are we doing the roadshow at the beginning and the end, or just at the beginning?
Well, just do it at the beginning.
Okay.
Uh but again, it'll be up to the committee if we wanna do the roadshow again. I'm happy to do that. Getting your vote.
No issues.
Did we do the roadshow in the end before?
Other than.
No.
No.
At the beginning.
Right. But there's always tough at the beginning of the year to get.
Yeah, no, it's just because of COVID, we haven't seen the buildings in so long.
Right.
Well, I think it was always tough to do at the beginning of the year because it's hard to be like introduced and what's going on in the school if it's like.
Opening of school report in November.
Yeah, exactly. Or the opening of school report three days later.
And the LG was always tough because, yeah, you you got there and they're like, nothing, you haven't yet. Just open the doors, yeah. The first day of buses was tough. Okay, um I would entertain a motion to approve the dates uh as in our packet.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? unanimous. Okay, next up, we have the vote uh to appoint the superintendents and board directors of Reed's Collaborative for twenty two twenty three. Joe, do I need to read this prior to the vote?
Yes, I will read it for you if you'd like.
Uh sure, come on.
So as as required, all Reed's Collaborative board members need to be appointed annually. Uh the the appointment is direct is to the board of directors of the collaborative by the school committee pursuant to chapters forty, section forty, as amended by chapter forty-three of the Acts of two thousand twelve, members of the board of directors of Reed's Collaborative to be appointed annually. Joseph Byetta is appointed to serve as North Public School Representative on the Board of Directors of Reed's Collaborative in accordance with Mass General Laws, chapter seven, section forty, as amended by chapter forty-three of the Acts of two thousand twelve, for the twenty two twenty three school year.
Is there any questions about this?
Nope.
Nope. Uh I would entertain a motion to appoint Joseph Byetta to serve as representative on the Board of Directors of Reed's Collaborative for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next up, the vote to appoint superintendent of the Board of Directors of Bi County Collaborative, FICO.
As per the prior pursuant to chapter forty, section forty, as amended by chapter forty-three of the Acts of two thousand twelve, members of the Board of Directors of Bi County Collaborative to be appointed annually. Joseph Byetta is appointed to serve as North Public School Representative on the Board of Directors of Bi County Collaborative in accordance with Mass General Laws, forty, section forty, as amended by chapter forty-three of the Acts of two thousand twelve. And that should say for the twenty two twenty three school year.
Uh any discussion on this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to appoint Joseph Byetta to serve as representative on the Board of Directors of Bi County Collaborative for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
Salute.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
What county is that? Is it North Public and Personal?
Yes.
Okay, next up, we have, uh Dr. Beattie has a conflict of interest disclosure.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um as per Mass General Laws, chapter uh two sixty-eight A, please accept this memo as my notification to the Norton School Committee and the Town of Norton that my daughter Margaret Byetta, a student at Norton High School, has been recommended by Mr. Cersei, Director of People Personnel Services, and Ms. Russo, Special Agent Coordinator, to be hired at the rate of fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents per hour as a student assistant in the extended school year program. The program runs from July fifth to August sixth, Tuesday through Thursday from seven forty-five to twelve fifteen PM. Um as you know, um I am appointing, I am received the final letter. She is my daughter. I have to go on record that um Maggie is, this will be a second year. So uh that's the disclosure that does require.
Sounds shady and it reeks of nepotism. I'm absolutely agree. Wonderful girl.
So do we have to do that if our kids weren't suckers?
Uh no, because you don't appoint them.
Okay.
I appoint them as that.
Anybody have any questions on that?
No.
Nope. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to accept the uh conflict of interest disclosure for the extended school year program. So, second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Uh next up, we have other business.
Nope.
Nope.
Oh, I don't know.
Eleven.
Oh, sorry. Uh look, sorry, vote to recognize speech, language, pathology assistance uh and certified occupational therapist assistance, unionization and enter for contract negotiations.
Mr. Chairman, this is a formal process, as you know, for prior communication with the board and uh our discussion um prior in executive session, which is step one. Um the board is, I'm recommending that the school committee recognize the speech, language, pathology assistance and the certified occupational therapist assistance for unionization and to enter into contract negotiations um as soon as available.
Does anybody have any questions on this?
No.
Comments? Nope. Seeing none, I would entertain uh, we're we're entertaining a motion to recognize the unionization and enter into contract negotiations.
Correct.
Okay, uh would entertain a motion, Russell. Salute. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Now, we're onto other business.
Um in front of you earlier this evening, I just provided you the general list of the ARPA list that we provided to Mr. Units um and uh town hall uh when we spoke last week. Um there'll be some changes to these because it's a working document. Um you'll see tonight in your walkthrough, one major issue that we have to address as part of this sewer connection is the potential that rainwater is actually collected from the rooftop, comes into the building and is connected to the sewer lines. That can't happen. Um we don't know that to be true. Uh we have to hire someone to come in and do that, study it, give give uh examples of how to take care of it, or can actually make the connection. It'll actually bring up that cost, so I'm glad that we found out about that now instead of uh later. But you'll hear more about that in the near future, but it's just a working list of what has is, the select board has yet to vote on any items in terms of final uh support.
And I wanted to just be very clear that this is not an expectation list. It's simply options for them to look at. They're not expecting in any way, shape, or form to get these all done.
Correct. We are simply.
Want somebody to think that we are asking for that because we're not, it is simply just here are things that may qualify.
You agree.
Okay, um any other business, Joe?
No, no other.
Okay, uh so we're going to.
I just have one thing. If you don't mind, yeah. Um I just want to apologize to the administration staff, parents, and my colleagues. Um this was definitely not the winter I expected to have. Between the loss of my father and my husband's hospitalization that he's still recovering from, I was unable to attend our meetings in person. I did attend most of them by Zoom, but I realized that that's not the same thing. So I know I put extra extra pieces on people, so I apologize for that. But all that being said, I want to give a huge thank you to uh the same people, the NTA um staff members, for the outpouring of cards, calls, check-ins, and messages that have been sent to myself and my family members during this extremely difficult time. Um the thoughtness, the thoughtfulness and caring certainly helped us get through a really dark time, and we're certainly blessed to live in such a thoughtful community. I just want to say thank you.
Nice to have you.
Catherine, you have absolutely nothing to apologize for.
Yeah, seriously.
Not accept your.
Awesome, thank you.
Uh, okay.
Can I just, um I just want to put another plug in for ITICS community. We're three weeks out. Um tomorrow night will be the nineteenth annual ITICS community basketball game. We have a ton of teachers this year. So much so that we had to put all the high school students on the police team, so this is gonna be quite the game.
Sure, what's the date again on that?
May sixth.
I'll be there.
Starts at seven o'clock.
Yeah, it will be.
Um tickets are still on sale. You can get them through Venmo. You can get them through the schools. Just send money in. Um so if you did Venmo when you show up at the door, you just have a name? We have a guest list. Yep, so your name will be on the guest list, so um just look into really sell tickets the next uh three weeks. Just asking principals to kind of talk it up in the schools, our teachers talk it up in the schools. Um and we have teachers from every school. It's it's amazing. Right, so it it should be a lot of fun.
Anything else? No. Okay, uh so our next meeting is going to be Thursday, April twenty eighth at the JCS library at six o'clock. We are going to now motion to adjourn not to um weaken the.
Correct. You're gonna you're gonna motion to complete the building walkthrough of the of the Yale Elementary School and not to return to an open meeting after the end of the tour.
Okay. Motion to adjourn and take the take part in the building walkthrough for the HAL, uh not to return.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. All right.
Thank you all very much. I'll leave a couple extra minutes longer. Good meeting.